Okay. We're going to call to order the Bothell Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, June 4th, 2014. We have everybody present except for Commissioners Blake Stedman, Eric Clark, and Steve Booth, who are absent and excused. And see if we have any in the public for non-agenda comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move to approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. Can I get a motion or discussion on any of the minutes?
So I will move to approve the minutes April 9th, 2014.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The record show that the approval for the minutes for April 9th passed unanimously. And do we have anything about the April 16th minutes?
Yeah, no. So I'll move to approve the April 16th, 2014 minutes. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was absent.
I was absent also. Do we have to, two of the four here? We can vote on it even though we are gone, can't we?
You can if you wish to, or we can bring the minutes back to you. It's your choice. If you feel more comfortable abstaining because you weren't here, that's understandable, and we can certainly bring them back.
We've been abstaining. So you're going to have to bring these ones back.
Okay. And procedurally, how do I do that?
You can just note that the April 16th minute doesn't have a quorum of Commissioners who are present to vote on, so we'll bring the April 16th back to you.
Okay.
Same with April 9th. I was absent on April 9th.
Okay.
We'll have to bring them both back.
But we have enough.
Yeah, we have the three.
Yeah, we had quorum on April 9th. Okay, so we don't have quorum to vote on the April 16th minutes, so we will bring those back for voting next time. All right. Any new business? It's like not, okay. And now, I guess we turn it over for public hearings from staff.
If you could, Mr. Chair, if you could formally open the public hearing, the continued public hearing on the 2015 periodic planning code update, that would be great.
Okay. And do I need procedurally a motion to do that?
No, you can simply stay open the hearing.
Thanks. We are now opening the continued public hearing on the 2015 periodic plan and code update.
Thank you. Good evening, Commission. The first item on this issue tonight is part of the periodic planning code update. It's a special presentation. We're doing this on the housing and human services element for you because the material in that element is somewhat complex and not quite as familiar to us as some of the other elements in the plan. So I think you all know that ARCH, which stands for Regional Coalition for Housing, ARCH acts essentially as an extension of staff force on the housing and human services element. So they very kindly agreed to offer to come up tonight and provide a special presentation for you. They're going to give you background on both housing on the east side and in Bothell itself. And with me tonight, to my immediate left, is Mike Stanger, and to his left, Arthur Sullivan. So I'd like to just say thank you to them for coming up. One point of business before we get started. We inadvertently placed an incorrect version of Part II of your presentation in your packet. We actually gave you an earlier draft version. So on the desk in front of you tonight, I've placed the correct version, and if you could simply go by that when we get to Part II rather than the version that was in your packet. With that, I will turn it over to Mike and Arthur.
Okay. I guess I should stand at the podium so I can do this slide? Thanks. Good evening. Just a little bit of background and context of what we're trying to do here for you tonight or with you tonight. As Gary said, ARCH is an interlocal agency. My executive board consists of your city manager, and so we are public employees, so tonight you should be treating us just like you do any other staff. So we just don't work in City Hall, but we're the same as being staff in City Hall. And our expertise, ARCH was formed by cities a number of years ago to sort of help cities work specifically on housing-related issues. So that's why we're here tonight. What we're hoping to do tonight, you've got a lot of material in your packet. We know there's a lot of material in there. We just want to hit on some of that and go over some of what we think are some of the key elements and features from our looking at Bothell and East King County. But this is also your opportunity to raise general questions, not only about data, but also for you to just make comments about what you think are housing issues in your community. So this is meant as much to help bring you up to speed, but also to start getting your feedback or thoughts. So feel free to interrupt at any point with questions or comments, so that as we're working with Gary on the staff work on preparing updates, potential updates to the policies, we want this to be an opportunity to brighten for that, okay? So meant to be more informal, but we do have a fair amount of information, and so we'd like to use this PowerPoint to supplement that work. Mike did a lot of the background research on this, and one of the reasons, when you look at the materials we gave you, what happened was, at the beginning of the update process, there's 14 cities in East King County who are all members of ARCH. And we got all the planning directors and staff together, and under the comprehensive plan, there's a requirement to do a needs analysis. And so we asked all ourselves the question, rather than do 14 separate needs analysis, should we maybe think about working together on preparing that information? A lot more cost-effective, efficient. But the other reason is, for the same reason ARCH was formed in the first place. ARCH was formed over 20 years ago because people noticed that housing markets aren't necessarily defined by housing city boundaries, that housing markets are often broader areas that are defined by economic areas. And so ARCH actually, when it was formed 20 years ago, it only started with three cities, but we drew a circle of what people told us was a housing market area. And over time, all the cities who were part of that area joined together. So what you're going to hear a lot tonight is similarities, is that you have differences, and we'll point those out, or you can bring those up, but there's a lot more similarities than there are differences in terms of housing needs amongst the cities in East King County. So that's one of the reasons we took this approach. So this is sort of a shared needs analysis. There are three sections to the report. The first section is sort of a story, has graphs, and in words talks about the East King County market and points out some of the exceptions, but generally also points out where there's more commonality. The second section, and this is the thing that Gary gave you a handout on, is for each city, we do prepare a supplement where we really try to call out both data that stands out, we think, for your community, or to highlight, but also what we think might be housing issues unique to your community. What are some of the things that might be out there? And then the third section is the appendices, which is the data. And that has all the different data we have, so that you can look at your data for your city, you can compare it to any other city, you can compare it to East King County as a whole, you can compare it to King County and Seattle as a whole. So that way, all the cities get to see the same kind of information, and you can play around with it yourself as well. So that's the layout and the format of the document. And so with that, I want to sort of jump in, if you don't have any immediate questions before I jump into sort of more background.
Anybody have any questions before we get started? And just for my own clarification then, so at this point, there's no specific action that the Commission is doing. This is informational.
Right. This is two-way dialogue. Give us your thoughts and reactions, questions, if there's things you feel. Like in Section 2, it's your section, it's a draft right now. So if you're like, hey, wait a minute, I live in this town, why didn't you cover this issue? Well, we'll say, okay, we'll do it. So this is a chance for jumping in and making comments on information. If you think something is really important, say, hey, you know, let us know that you think that's important and stuff, okay?
Perfect. Thanks.
Yep. So the first is, so we want to give you some planning framework. Why are you doing housing elements, or what's the guidance under the state and county guidelines for doing housing elements? A little bit about where the demand and supply for housing is, and then if we have time, talk about different ways to address housing, different ways cities have approached addressing housing needs in their communities, just to give you some ideas. Because we often find, people may say, you know, if you see an idea on a demographic thing, we ought to be doing this kind of strategy in our town, bring it up. And if, at the end, if we haven't heard of all, we'll share some others with you, okay? So from a framework point of view, where do cities fit in in terms of addressing housing in a community? And there's about, as we show you here, we think there's like five different levels in which cities get involved with housing. The first is what you're doing right now, which is your comprehensive plan. That's where you set broad goals and policies about the direction of what you think housing issues are and how you want housing to look and feel going into the future. You have other elements like land use and economic vitality that you may see overlap with some of the ideas that are discussed under the housing element. Then some cities have what are called sub-area plans. So you have like your central Bothell plan. Those are optional, not all cities do them, but that's when you then sort of take a, go through a similar process, but are honing in on one certain area of the community. Third is something that you have in your, one of the policies that you have in your plan, and most cities are doing now, is called a housing strategy plan. That's kind of the next step that we would see after you adopt your comprehensive plan, where you sit down and you take these broad concepts and you say, what are some strategies that would actually implement that policy? And so that's an exercise where you sit down and you list different actions, regulations, funding, land donation, things you could do to actually implement the policies. And that's usually done right after you do your update to the comprehensive plan, and that gives sort of a work program roadmap for activities over a four, three- to five-year period. And then that's something that you use to constantly go back, how did these different strategies work? Did we get closer to our goals? If not, let's look at other ideas. So that's another step that more and more cities are looking at. Then you have programs. This is where you actually do regulations. You have a senior overlay zone in your community. You donated a piece of land for senior housing a number of years ago. So this is where you allow accessory dwelling units. That's where you're actually, you know, those are the things that are in the strategy plan where you actually implement them. And so it's changing regulations, it may be city council taking action with their budget, it could be a wide variety of things. But when you create those, that's where you're actually putting the tools in place that actually make the things happen. And then finally, you create a program like that, you need to administer it. We find, and at ARCH, we do all of these things for cities. We help with staff assistance for all these. We have staff who are just on administration of programs. So you donated a piece of land 15 years ago for senior housing? How do we know it's going to be done the way the council wanted it done? We help write the contracts, you know, your staff do. Then you have to watch the project over time to make sure that the affordability is being maintained, that the incomes of the people are meeting the requirements. So that's another level of, when cities start making things happen, how do you then, over time, make sure it happens the way you want? So all, those are the different ways that cities get involved, and what we're saying is the comp plan is the beginning point of that, and that's what sets the stage for all those other levels of activity. Do you have a question? Okay. So in terms of doing your housing element, there's several different things that guide individual cities. First is you have the Growth Management Act. In particular for housing, there isn't a lot of language in the Growth Management Act, but there are a few key things. One is saying that you need to have sufficient land for housing to meet your growth targets that you will have. All cities are given an overall growth target for both employment and housing, so you need sufficient land zone for the housing requirement. You need to do a needs analysis, which is what I was referring to a few minutes ago. That's required under the Growth Management Act. Then you need to do, provide housing affordable to all economic segments. You need to have a variety of residential densities and housing types, or have strategies to do a variety of residential densities. And then also look at preservation of existing housing. It's not much longer than that, the Growth Management Act. But then what happens is each county develops countywide planning policies. Now, you're a unique city because you have two counties. Now, you're the only city we work with that also has Snohomish County, so you're going to hear a bent towards King County, but we understand in working with Bothell, there's two counties and we have to do that process and account for both counties' efforts and both parts of your, all parts of your cities in both counties. But in King County, they actually went through a fairly extensive process to update the countywide planning policies, and so again, they repeat some of the same things I just referenced in the Growth Management Act, but they go a little bit more detail. And they, and one of the things it says in the countywide planning policies is an acknowledgement that all cities have a role in housing. But what our county says is, we used to, until two years ago, every city had an explicit number that they derive for affordable housing goals, and you'll see those a little bit later. Now, what the countywide planning policies say is, we understand what the proportional needs for housing are, and you're going to see that in a minute, and all jurisdictions should be striving to meet a comparable amount or a proportionate amount of that overall need. And I'll explain that a little bit more. And what they say is, we realize different cities are in very different circumstance, so we acknowledge that cities should tailor their efforts around the conditions of their cities. And so it's more emphasis on your process of, what are you doing to try to get towards proportionality and meeting the proportional needs within the tools you have available? Are you assessing what you're doing on an ongoing basis? And are you adjusting your actions as a result of the results that you're achieving? And so the other thing that the countywide planning policies do, and you'll see again a chart in a minute, is, and up until two years ago, we talked about low income and moderate income, and you're going to see those figures in a minute. And now what they realize is that low income encompassed a quarter of the population, and there's another category that has now been added in, which is very low income, because they realized that that was a really big cross-section of people, and that half of that population group really has a very, very different housing issues than part of it. And so now we're calling out very low income, and I'll show you that in a minute. And so those are probably some of the highlights from the countywide planning policies. They list sort of different ideas that you can do, and one of the things we do with your staff is we go through all of that list, look at your existing policies, and see if we feel like there's any areas where there's gaps, and if not, we'll come back when we have the policies, and we'll come back and say, here's an area in the countywide planning policies, you have a potential gap, so let's have a conversation if some policy adjustment is needed. So that's one of the tasks that we'll go through. But those, that's sort of the overview of what the countywide planning policies in King County are about now. Any questions on that before we now jump into the real, start talking about housing? Okay? So as I mentioned, housing elements deal with all housing, but a lot of the effort and emphasis is where it's the most challenging, and so that's in the area of affordable housing. And so in the countywide planning policies, there are three levels of affordability that are categorized under the affordability levels. One is moderate income, which is at 80% of median income, so you'll hear that, but on this chart we tried to show you is what that translates to in terms of income. So that's an income of $48,000 for a single person, up to almost $70,000 for a family of four. It means rent levels of $1,200 to $1,700 a month, and it means owner occupied, for owner occupancy of housing that would be priced at 180 to about $260,000. That gives you an idea for moderate income, what is affordable to that income level. Low income is 50% of median, which is $30,000 to the $43,000 figure, translates to rent of about $750 to $1,000 a month. Very low income is $18,000 to $26,000. Now, if someone's at $10 an hour, minimum, you know, a little bit above minimum wage now, that's $20,000 a year if they're working full-time. So to give you some context of where these numbers play out, we're going to show you a little bit more to give you some more context to these numbers. But when you're a planner in this county, these are the levels when you deal with affordable housing that we work from and the terminology we use. Okay? Now, remember I talked about proportional need? What everyone, all the cities got together when they developed the countywide planning policies? And the countywide planning policies is a group effort. It's not like King County telling the cities. It's all the cities have a chance to sit around a table together and say, gee, we have this Growth Management Act, how do we want to collectively respond to it? So it's not like cities are in a vacuum and someone's telling us all what to do. So what we looked at is, when you look at King County, 12%, 12.5% of all households earn less than 30% of median income. Another 11% or so earn between 30% and 50% of median. So the first is the very low income level, the second is the low income, and then 16% earn between 50% and 80% of median income. So that means when you add those all together, over 40% of all households are in those categories of very low, low, and moderate income. So it's a very significant portion of our population. So don't think of affordable housing as sort of public housing or anything like that. It's meant to cover a wide range of incomes where you look at explicitly, because we find often that the market acting on its own sometimes have gaps between what the needs are and what's available in the communities. And so this is what the income of residents are, and we're going to a little bit later show you how much housing is affordable at those income levels. And so what the whole idea is, is in an ideal world, all communities would have a proportionality of their housing supply that roughly matches those proportions. Now, you may wonder, that proportional mix, that was, that's based on census data. I've been now doing this work for over 35 years. This split between these income levels has been pretty darn stable the whole time I've done this. So in 1980, in 1990, in 2010, this mix between very low, low, and mod is pretty consistent over time. If anything, the very low and low has gotten a little bit higher, moderate's gotten a little bit lower, and higher income's gotten a little bit, a higher percentage. But generally, these numbers have been pretty stable over time.
Can I ask a clarifying question? What's the Y-axis on that chart?
The Y-axis is annual income for the household.
It's the number.
Or is it the number of households?
It's the number.
Oh, it's the number of households. I'm sorry. It's the number of households at that income level. I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm. So now, where does the demand for housing come from? The first and foremost, especially, you know, in East King County, is we think a lot of your demand for your housing comes from your workforce. And that demand can be in one of several different ways. One, it can just be a pure count. How many people are working, need housing? And there's generally about 1.4 workers per household on average. The others can be the salaries that the people, that your workforce is earning. So those different things create different elements and are a key element in understanding the demand for housing. The way I've looked at, always looked at housing, working in community, is your goal as a community is to have housing that matches the income profile and the demographic profile, you know, singles, married couples with children, married. And if you did a cross-section looking at incomes and different household types, that's your housing demand. And in an ideal world, you would be trying to have a mixture of housing that meets the different needs of the people from your community, with much of that demand coming from the workforce. So the, now, what we found in Bothell is that your workforce has salaries overall that are pretty comparable to countywide averages, okay? In fact, you're, of all the cities in East King County, you, in some respects, most mirror countywide figures. So your salary levels are pretty much, it's interesting, you have very different salary levels for individual employment sectors, and that's in the charts that we have in your appendix, and you can look through it. But when you add up all the jobs together in Bothell, your average salaries are very similar to countywide average salaries in the workforce. Now, what's important is, remember that chart I showed you? At $15 an hour, remember I said $10 an hour is low income, right? $20,000 is very low income. Here are a number of jobs that pay $15 an hour, and that for a single person would be considered low income, and for a family of four, this would be considered very low income in terms of category. So to give you an idea, baristas, bank tellers, hotel maids, grocery clerks, these are all types of jobs in our community that translate in general to salaries that would be considered lower income. Here are some at $20 an hour, which is still moderate income for a single person, but low income for a family of four. So here's, gives you an idea of different kinds of jobs that fall into that category. This is another chart, and again, when you look at the charts here, you'll see appendices numbers or table numbers. They're referencing in the main report that you have in your packet where that information is. So if you want to note certain things and go back and look more carefully, this gives you an idea where we're getting this data from. Here's showing you a range of other different types of jobs, and then we've put in the bar there, kind of low income level and 80%. So you can see these, again, it's a different way of showing visually the same information in the last few slides, and you can see different kinds of jobs and where they land on the income spectrum. So you can see here, you start getting to construction, work in here in the moderate income level. I think some of these others we already had. Physical therapist is probably getting a little bit more moderate to median income. So just an idea of the wide range of types of jobs we have in a good, strong, stable community that have salaries in these income levels. Now, the other is, how much housing do you have in your community relative to the demand for housing from your workforce? And what we saw happen in East King County as a whole, from the '70s until about 1990 and 2000, is we used to be bedroom suburbs. There was a lot more housing in our communities than there were jobs. But what happened in East King, and you can see, Seattle was always kind of that, we're the ones who have a lot of jobs. And I think everybody's sort of used to that image of central city, that's where the jobs are, people commute into the city and they go home at night. And when I first moved here, that's kind of how it was. But what's happened is, Seattle has stayed high, but look at what's happened to East King County. We've basically gone on par in terms of becoming an area, and I almost was late tonight because our office is in Redmond, because there is so much demand from the local workforce growth, and that growth and demand for housing has been outstripped by this increase in supply in housing in East King County as a whole. And so that has completely, and my perspective, since I've been here, I came here in 1990, has completely changed very significantly one of the major elements of the importance of housing in these communities. It's about also having housing for the workforce. And so it's about economic development to some extent. Now, when we think about the future, you have, I don't know if you've talked in your land use element yet, every city is given a projection for employment growth and a projection for housing growth. When we layer on where we're at today, okay, then where we're at today with our planned growth, what we're showing is, we can expect in East King County for that ratio to increase even a little bit more, that our plans are not going to necessarily take that pressure off. Now, when we look at Bothell, you also were down lower back in the '70s and '80s and '90s. You got to about 1.1, and now you've sort of leveled off. So your Bothell is a little better balanced between workforce and availability of housing than other communities in East King County as a whole. However, you're still part, remember I said in the beginning, of a market area. And so when we're doing this analysis here, and if I go, if I go back a slide, but you would see that we accounted for the unincorporated areas in doing this analysis. In other words, if one city had a really high ratio and everybody around them had low ratios, it wouldn't be that big a deal, okay? Because it would all balance out. But what that previous slide showed you, and this slide shows you, East King County as a whole is at a point where that demand is high, and your number is a little bit more imbalanced than the others, but you're surrounded by communities when cumulatively that pressure is there and it isn't expected to necessarily go away. Now, that's not necessarily a bad thing. Employment and job growth is a good thing, but that puts a certain amount of pressure on the housing market. So that's sort of the basic demand, or one of what we think, this is probably where over 80, 90% of your demand comes from, is your workforce. Now, the other part is, now what do our communities look like? What's the profile of the individual households and families? And so here, what we have found, again, I've been doing this for 25 years here, looking at data that's up to 35 years, is more and more, East King County is looking like the countywide averages, okay? In a lot of different ways. Whereas before, yes, a lot of families with children and that kind of profile, that has slowly been changing to a point now where there's a lot more similarities than dissimilarities, not only East King County as a whole, but more and more of the jurisdictions. What we have found, and Bothell's not quite in this category, because you're an older city, you have been around a long time as a community. But Woodinville, for example, right next to you, 20 years ago, they had a really huge proportion of families with children. Then all of a sudden, it's getting more balanced and more empty nesters and more like that. And so, and it's real interesting, Bellevue 30 years ago, in terms of its age profile, Bellevue now looks like countywide averages. Bellevue 30 years ago had a very high proportion, but they got to the countywide average. Redmond lagged behind them about 10 years. Woodinville's lagging behind them about 10 years, in that they're newer cities. But what we're seeing is that trend towards, over time, after the growth has occurred, this first wave of growth, the cities have a tendency to want to sort of even themselves out. So what we've also seen is, in the last 10 years, not as much shift as we've seen in previous decades. So we're starting to see our communities getting to that balance point and are more mirroring what's going on in the broader, broader King County region. So you're now to a point where your age distribution is pretty similar and the types of households you have, and I think we have a slide or two to show that. Where you still are distinct is, you have a higher proportion, I believe, of renters who are cost, is it higher or lower? A higher proportion of renters who are cost burden, and we're going to get to that in a minute. So I have a few slides to sort of point out some of these differences and similarities. One is that, one thing that we've seen happen is, one- and two-person households make up 56% of all households in Bothell. That's almost the same as East King County as a whole. The majority of households now in our area are one- and two-person households. So what may that mean? And that's sort of And that's sort of this group and married with no children at home. Now, there's probably even some in the other households that are also one or two-person households, and in this one too, but just taking the ones that we know are one and two-person households, to 12 over 50%. And that's very similar to East King County as a whole, and it's similar to King County. So we're to a point where that kind of mix, this kind of mixture is not that dissimilar to what we see in other subregions and the region as a whole. So what might that mean? Households that don't need larger houses. So do we look at our supply and say, we should find opportunities for smaller housing units, both rental, like accessory dwelling units, or smaller ownership homes? Because not everybody, you know, the empty nester, they want to stay in the neighborhood, or they want to stay in that kind of neighborhood, but there's not maybe as much housing choice as I'd like to see. In my neighborhood, I live in a sort of subdivision in Redmond, two of the old homes, when they rebuilt this whole, were left. You know, a little one-story, small homes, and they're both lived in by older couples who don't have any children. And so they love, lived in the neighborhood, and they, and so they've been able to stay, and it's worked for them. Another is the age of the population. In general, again, similar to East King County as a whole, what you can see here is the age distribution. We're showing you the change over time of household distribution. This is East King County. Yours is very similar to this. You're probably, your big exception is, you're doing a little more growth in the senior population to catch up. You were a little bit behind, and you're catching up. But what's, we like to point out in the age distribution for seniors, is we're to a point now, you can see, we used to be a higher proportion of seniors were 65 to 75, and a lower proportion were 75 and over. We're now seeing a much more steady, equal distribution between the two age groups. People are living longer. But that also means seniors who are over 75 are more likely to need specialized forms of housing or some level of assistance at some point, for some reason, short-term or long-term, with their housing needs. And so that might mean a housing implication to the city about being able to accommodate this more even split. You saw a little bit of growth in that area, and we think that's partially because you did a senior overlay zone. And so your senior overlay zone has over by the senior center, and we think that's part of the reason why you sort of caught up in that 75 and over age group. We don't know exactly where everybody lived who's over 75, but you did that 20 years ago. You created that overlay zone, but it's mostly built out now, right? So it's essentially built out. You created an opportunity for senior housing in a part of your community. It's happened, and so that's allowed your profile to be similar to other cities. The other thing we're starting to see, and this is pretty obvious, this is the baby boom coming through. So it's coming. Everyone's saying that there's going to be a fairly significant increase in the senior market. The other thing that I just sort of added here is, you now have something that a lot of jurisdictions don't. You have a university and college campus. That's projected to have 10,000, you know, students, full-time. That means many part-time. And some of them may be commuting and some may not, but we're seeing the same thing in Bellevue with Bellevue College, that that's putting a certain kind of need in your community because of that university and that secondary education opportunity in your community, which is only growing. And the university has started taking some actions to address some student housing needs by buying some existing properties or leasing them. So those are some of the sort of age profile things to keep in mind as we go along, or as you move forward. Of seniors, we find seniors who rent are more likely to be cost burden, which means pay a high percentage of their income for their housing, more so than other age groups. As also young. So the two groups that, you know, are out there, especially like with the students, those are the two age groups of renters who are expect, who you can most expect to be cost burdened, and we'll define that in a minute for you. We expect seniors to grow, and then, as we pointed out, you do have relatively more senior housing available for a city of your size than other cities in East King County, and that's directly attributable to the overlay zone. So the question is, have you done enough? You know, do you feel pretty comfortable? Or do you want still policies that encourage continuing to look for opportunities as that demand may grow? So that's something, when we come back on the policy front, for you to think about. Now, this is another sort of phenomenon that's occurring in general out in the community, and that is, you know, foreign-born ethnicity and major, major shifts in diversity in communities. To a point, you can even see here, this is showing Bothell's changed percentage of population that's foreign-born, the difference between 2000 and 2011, to a point where in East King County, it's greater than the countywide average, that it's almost 25% of the population when you look at all of East King County combined. I was at a public meeting last night in Summamish, and they actually have the second highest proportion of foreign-born population of all the cities in East King County, which makes them number two, I think, in the county. Yes?
Yeah. Can you clarify what foreign means? Is it born outside of Bothell, born outside of Washington, born outside the States?
Outside the United States.
Thanks.
Yes. And so what you're seeing, and, and some people ask, well, why, and you can see for Bothell, you're changing too. You're not to that same percentage, but if trends follow what we've seen often happen, you could probably expect to see yourselves start to approach that, you know, continue to see that increase to occur. Now, what's that got to do with housing, right? And I think we have one other slide here. There could be a couple implications in terms of thinking about housing. First, when you have programs that have a lot of, starting to serve people who are lower income or are diverse and have foreign backgrounds, cultural, you know, understanding and awareness, language barriers, things like that. So when you are trying to reach out to differing income levels or designing programs, be conscious of that as you design the programs. And that's not going to show up in your land use code, but it's something that, Arch, we often are helping cities do direct participation with projects, are we being conscious of that? Are we being aware that our communities are changing? The other is that, and this is sort of a bigger picture kind of question that we'd like to throw out to commissions and cities to think about, is maybe they have, you know, different cultures have different perspectives of what a housing unit wants to be. I used to do development back in the 80s in California, and we learned very, very fast in the mid-80s, that if we didn't learn how to design housing a certain way, we had a certain segment of the market that was not going to buy our product, okay? That the Asian communities expected certain design features in their housing. And it wasn't so much a size issue, but I give that as a story to say, we as cities, you don't build the housing. You lay the framework out there for the market to come in, and sometimes it's a nonprofit community, but you're laying the groundwork to get housed for others to create housing. And those people who are developing that housing are constantly chasing the market, trying to be responsive to the market. I worked on Redmond, are you familiar with Redmond Ridge? I worked on that in the planning stages 20 some-odd years ago, because I had some affordability requirements. And when a lot of that was being built, people back then were saying, no one's going to buy this housing. The yards are too small, it's not going to work, same with this Sequoia Highlands, who's going to buy that? And yet it's done very, very well, because for certain other, and a lot of it was foreign-born who bought into those properties, because that issue wasn't an issue for them. It was more the design of the home or whatever it was. And so the market is constantly responding to market changes. And maybe it's this, maybe it's the aging of a population, maybe it's a new wave of younger people who are looking to be more urban living where they can use transit. But the point is, housing moves forward by being responsive to changes in the market. And so to some extent, to what extent, when the cities do their planning, do they leave some flexibility to allow the market to be able to keep up with the times? Because if you don't keep up with the times, then maybe you get passed by. And so that's just sort of a general thing. Yes, you want to make sure your community works well, but at the same time, you can't predict every change in demographics that's going to occur out there, and some flexibility. So there's going to be a lot of emphasis on senior housing for a while, but that's only going to last so long. And then there'll be some other shifts. So maybe the market this time is going to say, we want housing that works for seniors but isn't necessarily only for seniors, so that in 20 years, when the boom goes through, it can be something else. And that's the kind of thing that cities need to be understanding of, and try not to go overboard sometimes in trying to meet every little need, but give some flexibility to let builders respond. And that's, so FAR is a great example of that, where cities increasingly, instead of using density, you know, per unit, per acre, they said FAR. That allowed builders to build small or large, depending on where the market wants to go. So now, cost burden. I've mentioned this term several times. Under national standards, if a household is paying more than 30% of their income, they're considered to be cost burdened. So that means you're paying more for housing, that if you're paying that much, you're going to probably, you could have challenges with paying all the other expenses of life. Insurance, and cars, and food, and other things that are, that you have, clothing, et cetera. So we have a slide here that's going to show you that, in general, probably not a great shock, more cost burden are towards the lower end of the income spectrum. Younger and older renters are the ones that are most impacted. Now, what's, really starts to get a little bit more noticeable, in fact, a lot of people say, hey, when I bought my first home, I paid more than 30% of my income for my home. That's not such a big stretch, but I'm going to try to point out two things to keep in mind when you think about this. One, that about half of renters who are cost burdened are paying more than 50% of their income for housing, okay? And about a third of homeowners who are cost burdened are paying more than 50%. That is really starting to be a stretch. The other thing to keep in mind is, and this is what this slide tries to show, is what proportion of households at different income ranges are cost burdened? And that's what the green bars are. So they're saying, if, this bar is saying, if your income's under $10,000, you've got about an 85% chance you're going to be cost burdened, okay? And we use 35%. We didn't want to make it right at 30. We bumped it up to 35% when we did this math here. Even at $20,000, okay? So that's that low income level, that you're seeing that at this lower income range, of very high proportions are, households are stressed in terms of housing expense. And then as your income goes up, you can see the number goes lower and lower. The reason I added the blue bars is, fortunately, I'm one of the blue bars. I've owned my home long enough. How many people pay less than 20% of their income for housing? And as you can see here, that bar and that percentage goes up significantly as income goes up. And I only sort of point that out because fortunately, a lot of us hopefully try to strive to be at this level, but to help give you context, don't think of what you're going through, go to 30% of what your income is and start doing that. And then also realize that this household only has $20,000. So two-thirds or half of $20,000, that leaves only $10,000 for everything else you have to pay for. So that really puts a lot of burden on households who are out there. So that gets to sort of, you know, another kind of part of needs when we look at needs, and that is specialized needs, that, yeah, we have needs just from workforce that we've been talking a lot, but there are some people who become homeless. They go through an episode in life, they lose a job, they go through a medical experience that they don't have enough insurance to cover, that results in them not being able to afford their housing anymore. And so one of the things that's been happening in the last 10 years, and this is one area will probably come with some ideas for food for thought, because when we were first doing comprehensive plans 20 years ago, we weren't thinking a whole lot of calling out. We talked about special needs housing, but we didn't talk about different kinds. And so now, for the last 10 years, everyone around King County is sort of working together to try to improve the systems that serve homeless, so that we do a better job of trying to address homelessness, to get people who aren't homeless, getting the right services or the right kind of housing, and moving them hopefully out of homelessness. And so there's been a lot of work. We do counts every year. I think points that we make here is, is that we figure that there are over 8,000 people any night, they're either on the street, in emergency shelter, or in transitional housing, so not in permanent forms of housing. And you can see, it's about a third, it's about a third of each of those three categories. Now, they're everywhere in King County. They're not just in Seattle or anything like that. We've had a shelter in East King County, an emergency shelter in the winter, over 100 men, they got up to 100 men a night in that shelter this winter, and one of the screenings they do is, do you have a local connection? Okay? We figure that about seven, they screen people who are going into the homeless system. When we first started doing this about six years ago, 17% of those who were homeless single adults, their last address was in East King County. So you may see more homeless in Seattle, it doesn't mean that's where they're all coming from. They're coming from all over, they're coming from all over the county. There are also families with children. All the school districts in East King County have over, well over 100, in some cases, multiple hundreds of homeless youth going into the school system currently, okay? So it's not just singles, it's families, it's all types of different households. So there's a countywide plan or a countywide group, but in East King County, we've also been saying, from what we understand in East King County from serving homeless people, where does that, how does that shake out? What are the different kinds of needs? And we've said in East King County, we had about 130 serving families. We think we would, ideally, we'd have up to another 900 units of some form or another to help homeless families. We have 30 beds for single adults. We feel like there's about 800 units that are needed of some shape or form, either shelter or units for short-term, or something they can move into that they can afford. And then for youth and young, and then we also called out victims of domestic violence, which is a specialized need, people who are dealing with safety issues as well as just being homeless. And then we also have youth and young adults. You have a facility in your community run by Friends of Youth. They've, we've got about six, we had about 67 units when we started this work. We figure we need about 96 more, and we've added about 60 since then. And I think, I think the one, and Bothell was here, is one of the 67 that was already here. So homelessness is one kind of specialized need in the community. There's other types of specialized needs. People with developmental disabilities, people with disabilities that need help in order to be able to live day-to-day, where they need services in tandem with their housing. So that's sort of the demand side of the equation. Now, what does our supply look like? What do we have out there? And so what you see is, is that, one, most importantly, as we said in GMA, do we have enough land zoned for our planned growth? And the answer is yes, okay? And in fact, cities are growing at about the pace they're expected to grow at. You're a little bit behind times, but you're not alone there, because we had a pretty big recession for, you know, this count started in 2006. So we've had three or four years of recession, and you look like you have a number of things poised, and we expect you'll be able to catch up. So generally, cities have been growing and meeting that rate. Oops. For homeownership rates, we saw what happened was, from 1990 to 2000, because of national policy, homeownership rates were going up, from low 60 percentage overall to the high 60 percentage. What we've seen in the last 10 years is that rate dropped back down to the low 60s. And Bothell's ownership rate at 66% is slightly above sort of that national average. But that shift is as much about what happened with financing policy at the national level as it was any real significant shift in demographics. And probably, I don't know, from what I, from my studies over my lifetime, this is probably about the ratio you can expect. There's just a certain percentage of the population that rental housing is the way that works, either because of income or choice, that's about what it seems to settle out at. So we are seeing that your ownership rates are right in line or a little bit ahead of ownership rates in most other areas. Now, in terms of your ability to grow, one of the charts that you have in, and I'm going to show you this chart in a second, chart 12 in your thing, is looking at what kind of housing do you have capacity for? Is it single-family? Is it multifamily? Is it mixed-use? Mixed-use is like your downtown where it could go commercial, or it could go housing, or it can go a mix, okay? So there's more flexibility in the use of that land. We think that housing in centers is very responsive to a number of issues that have come up in the last 20 years in our country. Access to transit works well, access to services, being able to walk, being close to employment and things along those lines. So there's a lot of positives related to the housing that we're seeing more and more of in our centers. But there's one really big difference in terms of affordability. You look at downtown Redmond, you look at downtown Bellevue, you look at what's on the drawing boards for years, that housing in general is more expensive to build than the garden-style, surface parking, two-story walk-up, multifamily housing that we saw predominantly built before the year 2000 in suburban locations. It's more expensive in general when it's built. So one of the things we're saying should be watched carefully is, and you'll see when I talk about affordability in a minute, that we may not, even though we have enough multifamily housing planned, is it going to result in the range of affordability that we might have seen naturally occurring with the market acting on its own than we saw in the past? Okay? So along those lines, when we look at, and I'll come back to that point in a second, this slide is talking about what does affordability in general look like in East King County? For rental, and this is for rental housing. Rental housing in East King County, a much smaller portion of it is affordable to lower income, like under 15, around 15%, compared to over 40% in South King County, 33% in Seattle and Shoreline. So the proportion of our rental housing stock is more expensive than anywhere else in the county, when you look at other jurisdictions. Little different for Bothell, but when you're, look at the East King County market, that's Little different for Bothell, but when you look at the East King County market, that's East King County as a whole. I'll come back to you in a second. And so we have, and the same is true for ownership housing, in general, and you see there's charts in the appendices, you can compare East King County as a whole to the other parts of the county, our housing costs are more expensive. So that's the reality that we have. This probably, now what we found is that increases in rents have pretty much paced increase in incomes. So this 15% you see here, that's what it was like when I showed up here in 1990. Your rents were more expensive back then, too. You've just steadily stayed higher than the rest of the county. It's not necessarily because you were the same as the county 20 years ago and now you're more. No, you've always, in general, rents have been higher in East King County. Now, I've sort of jumped around, that slide should have been before. When I was just talking about the housing capacity, there is a graphic, number 12, that shows you the split between those four kinds of housing, mixed use, multifamily, and single family. This chart is only calling out the mixed use. Again, this is hopefully one of the things we bring to you because we work for every other city in East King County, is we started noticing about six, seven years ago, that as a result of the Growth Management Act, almost every city that we know or work for plans for a lot of their growth to occur in their centers, rather than be spread evenly throughout a city. Keep the single-family neighborhood, single-family. The result is, of our future residential capacity, over 50% of that is planned for our mixed-use centers in the different cities. And this is just showing for different cities. Now, we think your number here might be slightly out of date because of the changes downtown. So this chart might change a little bit in the next week or two, but even under the old designations, half of your future capacity was in mixed use, which is mostly your downtown center, you know, your downtown area. But you can see places like Bellevue and Issaquah and Redmond, a very large proportion of their future housing is planned for these types of centers. Implications potentially are, gee, maybe these centers need to work for more than just single people. If you're planning a lot of your growth to occur in these centers, maybe to be sustainable for the market to work, for builders to be able, they need to make this housing in these neighborhoods work for families as well. Okay? Maybe that's one of the trends of the future, where the building community is saying, I can't just keep building one-bedroom units in the centers in order to keep building and meet the demand that's out there. I may need to be able to diversify. In fact, one of your builders here in your area, I was talking to about that, who's building another city, and he's going, man, maybe if I could work with you, I'd love to build some three-bedroom units downtown. And then downtown Redmond on another property he's doing. Yes?
So you bring that up, and I think we talked about this, Gary, it becomes a parking issue? Did the developer talk to you about that, the requirements of a three-bedroom, the parking, just the amount of parking that's having to be, what is the, what are you seeing as the obstacle to getting the two and three-bedroom? Is it parking?
To some extent, it's probably parking. To another is builders do often build to what they saw last year. And so it was working to do the smaller units, but what we're seeing is, and then the other is the pure cost. To make those buildings with structured parking and the, you know, the five stories and elevators and all of that work, the cost per square foot is higher. And so they're trying to get the price points. And so if you've got a larger unit, the rent you need to get for that unit can be relatively high. And so it's a combination, there probably wasn't as much demand, but we're starting to see that demand start to shift. And we're, Mercer Island surveyed all their down, the new multifamily downtown, they have over 100 school-aged children now living in several apartment buildings in downtown Mercer Island. So I think a lot, so it's a combination of all of those factors that probably make it a challenge to do those larger units.
So my, my next question, you've been, you're talking about a little bit, was the demographics that are moving into these, are these people, the income level, are they going to be higher than our typical, than we've seen in Bothell?
So that's where I'm saying, thinking and understanding that. There'll be some people, this is how the development community works, they'll go for the highest they think they can get, okay? Or that will work and there's demand for. But what we're seeing is, in downtown Bellevue, if you look at the chart, I'm going to get to in a minute, in a couple of minutes, you will see that there's a lot of market-built housing affordable at 80% of median in Bellevue. You know, how did that happen? Tiny studios. They were trying to get to a price point. So there are builders, we're now seeing that in Redmond, a couple of builders are building very small units to get to the price point. So builders are saying, we know there is not an unlimited demand to do the 700, 800 square foot one-bedroom that needs to have a rent of $2,000 a month.
So what, so when you say tiny, what does that mean?
Well, let's see, the, the, what's, what do we call those units?
Mini suites.
The mini suites or whatever can be as small as 150 square feet with a bathroom, a tiny bathroom. So that's small. And so that builder built, in downtown Redmond, he built one property where he took town homes, it's kind of this, you might have read about it in Seattle, similar model. He had a nine-unit townhouse building, permitted as a nine-unit townhouse, but each town home, he took the living areas and bedrooms, and he put bathrooms in them all, and he made them into five, for each unit, five individual micro-units. So he had 54 units on the edge of downtown Redmond. Within 12 months of him completing that, he started a 96-unit building in downtown Redmond. He's trying to do one in Kirkland now. Now, he can't build thousands of those, but there's a certain amount of demand for that product. So the key is, there's different household sizes. And a point we're going to make to you in a minute is, most of the stuff the market's been building that quote "meets an affordability definition" that we track, have been rental units and have been smaller rental units, one-bedroom and studios. Okay? So part of the challenge becomes, are there ways to try to get some of those other needs met? And so that's where incentive programs come in. So in Redmond, now the builders have to do a certain percent affordable, and they have to include all size units when they do that. So that's where I was saying earlier, the market, you know, there probably isn't huge demand yet for a ton of families, but there is a certain amount of demand. We talked with some families when their planning was done for Bell-Red Corridor in Bellevue, and for families to want to move to these areas, you need, you need to make sure you have what families want to have. Now, your downtown may have a lot of parks, libraries, walk-to-shopping, you know, things where they feel safe walking along the street with their kids, things like that are going to be important for that to work for them. And it's, it's an emerging area, so I can't give you an emphatic answer. These are all the different kinds of factors that I think go into making it happen or not happen. I think it's one of the big challenges in the next 15 years for our region, is making these neighborhoods work for a lot of different kinds of households so that they sustain themselves long-term. So that they can shift as market shifts and stuff. I think that's, that's a big question that will be out there. So I think I've covered a number of these, as I said, average rents. Our rent increases, I said, have been similar, but because we started higher. So I think these are things I all talked about already. Prices in East King County. Now, we had the recession, right? Huge recession. And what we found is, especially for homeownership, much bigger dips in home prices than rents during the recession. Much bigger. And the dips were as much as 21, 20% and even higher in some cities in terms of what average sales prices were. We have found that the prices have not fully recovered. Yours are pretty much fully recovered in Bothell. Okay? And so your prices, the other thing about your pricing, and I don't know if it's the next slide or if I've, let's see. No, okay, I'm going to come back to this in a minute. I just got one. That pricing has pretty much recovered for ownership housing. More so here, East King County where the prices were higher, they haven't fully recovered yet. They're still about 5% below the peak in some areas, are probably getting very close. So we've had a big dip, and we've pretty much recovered in about a five-year period. Definitely in Bothell, you're now back to that point where your pricing is pretty similar. That can be relatively important because a lot of people were trapped in their homes because they had a mortgage, and if they sold, they'd have to do a short sale because they got it when they bought the home. So hopefully, we're seeing foreclosures are way down from two, three years ago. So we're, hopefully, we're moving past some of the worst stories of the recession. We're not out of it by any means, but we are seeing that it's a little more in our rearview mirror than it felt like two years ago. Now, in terms of what is the affordability when we look at it as a whole, as we said, about 7% of housing in East King County is affordable to lower income. Remember I said, very low and low, added together is 24% of the need? So you can see that gap. And 17% is affordable to moderate. So that, that number isn't necessarily way off, but when you add those two together, 24% versus 42%, you can see there's shortage, but the shortage is actually more in the lower income range than the moderate. And then we have what percentage of units are affordable for rental and ownership. For you, Bothell, you're not quite at the countywide averages in terms of affordability, but you're closer. You have 12% of all your housing is affordable to lower income, and 21% is affordable to moderate income. And that compares to, I believe, about 17% of units are affordable to low income in all of King County, and about, actually about the same percentage affordable to moderate. So even countywide, we have an affordability problem at 50% of median below. We only have 17, 18% of our overall supply affordable, doesn't matter what, and that includes no matter what the condition is, and yet a need for 24% of households are in that income range. So you can see Bothell is closer to the countywide than the rest of East King County. So when we started looking at jobs-housing balance, salaries, and housing affordability, you're one of the more relatively balanced communities there, but you're still being influenced by a market area that's a little bit bigger, that goes beyond your boundaries and stuff. And there's still needs, even with where you are, there are still needs that are out there. You have cost-burdened households and stuff, but you have a relatively good mix of a different variety of ranges of housing and affordability levels. And this is also, there's two ways of also looking at affordability. How much affordability have you explicitly created through your actions? Remember I said at the beginning, you used to have an explicit number. We don't have that now, but we have been measuring that. And what we found is that in East King County, we were getting about 85% of our goal for moderate-income housing, based on our growth, and only about a quarter of our goal for lower-income housing. What we also found, as I said earlier, is that a lot of that housing, and that's what this chart is showing us, is that for lower income, to create housing for lower income, you know, there's different ways you can do it. You can do it through direct assistance, you can do it through land use incentives, which is like density bonuses or allowing mother-in-law apartments, or the market could do it. Okay? The market just builds it, and it happens to be affordable at how we define affordability at that income level. As you can see here, while we've managed to make progress, it's always, almost always needed some level of direct assistance. Land use incentives have worked a little bit, but not very often, and market. But we go to the moderate income level, this is where we found that different strategies can all help make affordability in the moderate income range. One, just what you do with your zoning and what you allow the market to do. So this is where I was talking about in Bellevue, how did they get 1,100 units built? Rental units in downtown. Okay? That's what this unit count mostly is. Same, now you, you have a very large number, because before the year 2000, you were getting still garden-style apartments being built that just in general were coming in at about 70 to 80% of median income. That's what their rents translate to. And that's what we found historically, is garden-style apartments are usually coming in very close to affordable to moderate income, which makes sense, because most renters are low and moderate income. The vast majority of renters are in that income range. And that's why I'm saying, one of the things we say cities should be watching more carefully is we're shifting from that kind of multifamily product to a much more urban, higher-cost product. And will we be able to get that? So that's where maybe the incentives become more relevant. And this is where cities, when they change their zoning, say, as part of our zoning change, we want some of the housing that results from the increase to be affordable at moderate income. And they mandate that. So Redmond does that, Kirkland does it, Bellevue does it in certain areas. So a number of our jurisdictions are, Sammamish does it, are increasingly saying, we're creating these centers, we want some, we want to make sure we get some affordability mixed in there. So that's what's here. Also in here is accessory dwelling units. And that's where Mercer Island, where'd my arrow go? That's where Mercer Island was able to get two, oops, 200 units of affordability, is through, almost every one of those is accessory dwelling units. They actually encourage their creation in their community. They thought it was a great way to respond to needs in their community. So there's, those are the two main ways that land use incentives are used. And then direct assistance is land donations and cash through the Arch Trust Fund or other public funders. And as you can see here, when we get into the moderate range, half of it's created through these government interactions, and half is by the government setting the stage. So that's why we say to cities, it's really important to think about all the different tools you can use to create that range of affordability and diversity that your community needs to help support its workforce and others. So, sort of in summary, I think that things that caught my eye and Mike's eyes as we were putting this together is the student population. And what does that do to demand and needs in the community? That's, I think, out there. You, one of your strategies has been manufactured housing and zoning for manufactured housing so that they can stay. That, I think, is one of the reasons you have a relatively high percentage of ownership housing that's affordable to moderate income. It's probably due to the fact that you have a number of manufactured home communities that are relatively affordable. And so I think that's, you're pretty, you're very unique on the east side in terms of not only having the ones that, along the river, but you also have other communities throughout the city that are, create a different kind of ownership housing, but a relatively affordable form of ownership housing. Senior housing, that wave is coming, you've done an overlay, it happened, but it's now pretty much fully developed out. So does that mean, that's a good, you know, you have a relatively high proportion, so maybe you're good? Or is that something you want to watch and think about more, and are there other areas you might want to think about creating opportunities for seniors? Downtown housing, I've already talked about quite a bit. You know, what is that housing going to look like? Who is it going to serve? What needs is it going to be able to meet in your community from that? And then another thing, too, is you had, what's your R10 zoning or whatever? Another thing you did in the 90s, very popular, resulted in smaller homes being built, but again, that's pretty much been fully developed, right?
Fifty-four.
Hmm? Right. That zone, that you created that. And so are there other forms, or is there, is that another area to help create a range of price points for ownership, thinking about smaller, more entry-level forms of ownership? So that's sort of the demand side. So any comments on that? And then if we have a few minutes and, or not, I have a couple different, I've touched on them already, strategies that address some of these different needs, but any particular comments or questions about this information?
It's definitely, it's a lot to absorb.
Yes.
And, and this information, I know this is in slide form, and our packets were in more of a, looked like a Word document.
Right.
But it seems like they're the same information, the same charts?
Yeah, so when you, right, that's what we were saying in that PowerPoint, it references the charts that are in here. So yes, there's no, there's only little bits of the data that aren't in here, but yes, the vast majority is in here. Okay? Yes?
One question, looking at our, section two of our packet, so the Bothell-specific section.
Yes.
Under housing affordability, the two main points that we, that you guys touch on are the ADUs and the manufactured homes, like you just spoke of.
Right.
Is that section going to be expanded at all to talk about zoning or, you know, affordable housing requirements as part of apartment developments downtown? Or it just seems like there might be more options in that section to?
So I think mostly here, we're just trying to raise issues. Policies is when, if you feel that's an important issue, we'd want to make sure that the policies adequately address that. So if you feel that those are particularly important areas, we'd make sure that we look at the policies. We can maybe look at adding a little bit more in here on those topic areas if you think they're particularly relevant. Happy to try to get a little bit more information on them. The main purpose in the needs analysis is to call attention to issues. Okay? And so if you go back to that very first slide, sort of the progression would be, here we're calling attention to it, if you think it's really important, and if there's some data that would help say why it's important, and you think that we need that, then we'll look for that. But then it becomes your right policies that say, this is really important to us as a community. That then sets it up when we do the strategy plan to make sure we come up with a number of strategies that would actually create that form of housing or preserve it or whatever. That then leads to regulations and things along those lines. So if you feel like a little more information will help set the stage why Is that the ones that caught your eye or?
Yeah, that's just one small section as part of the entire packet. And I mean, you mentioned that Mercer Island was a proponent of ADUs and I don't know, the language in here makes it sound like City of Bothell is too. They note that two have, two known developments have been completed and an unknown amount of other ones, so.
Yeah, we, one of the things the council did as part of the docket in 2013 was initiate proposed code amendments for accessory dwelling units. We know that we haven't been getting permitted accessory dwelling units because our regulations are very restrictive. So as part of this process with the housing element, we'll also be looking at the accessory dwelling unit regulations and we're hoping to bring the first cut of that to you on the 25th.
May I ask, were there other options that you were thinking of, that you had in mind?
Well, that's why I was curious to hear your guys' take mainly. I mean, what your, what other municipalities within East King County are doing to further the need of low-income housing? Just because it seems like we're sort of limited with as far as manufactured home locations. That might not be a large growth center.
Right.
We could keep the amount that we have, but I don't see us increasing it.
Correct.
And then ADUs is a little bit of a wild card because, I mean, I don't know. I don't know that all Bothell residents are aware of their options and if we want a bunch of people living in backyards and stuff, so.
Right. So an example of what you just said is, in policies, you could say, regulations and other actions to encourage the creation and use of accessory dwelling units. So if you were to go to our website, we have a whole section on what it takes to build an ADU. Because the cities came to us and say, we need something to help homeowners know what it takes to do it. So your policies might not just be about regulations, but what other things can cities do to increase awareness and make it a tool that's used more in the community, okay? So if you feel, you know, so those are the, so when we're looking at policies, we'll look at things that give hints of where it's not just, where there's other types of actions. But I think you have hit it, you live in town, you're right. We haven't seen manufactured housing expect that to grow, but is it something you really want to preserve, okay? Accessory dwelling units, yeah, how proactive do you get to make it a tool that's utilized? And so it probably is more than just regulation if you want it to be more actively used. And there's different kinds of things you could do. As I mentioned, a lot of cities are using the incentives when they're doing their zoning to try to make, try to get diversity of housing prices. Other cities are looking at things like fee waivers and other property tax exemption tools that are available to them to get builders to agree to do affordability in exchange for deferring property taxes for a number of, like eight years or 10 years. So there's other types of tools like that that cities can use, kind of thing. So, you know, land donations, which you, your city has done. Most cities don't have a lot of surplus land, but if you do, do you have a policy saying we should first try to utilize some of it for housing that could have affordability in it? So there's, that's, a number of cities have done that. So those are, and that's actually what this last, I've sort of really quickly went through what's in, these are the different kinds of strategies, I think. Allowing building to be done using FAR, the mini-suites, making sure regulation, you know. Mini-suites, we found Redmond has really gone out on a limb to sort of be creative with the first one or two, to sort of figure out how they really work so that they can get built. Because there's some elements of them, like the parking requirement and how much parking do you require? So Redmond got very creative in trying to get around to the protections on the parking so that some mini-suites could be built in their town. Upzoned, I think that's what I was talking about, where you require affordability. Some cities use voluntary approaches. They're typically used a little less often than when they're required, that go within a rezone. Accessory dwelling units, the multifamily tax exemption, which I just mentioned, several cities are using that. They're using that in Kenmore to help some of the new building that's being built there. They'll have some moderate price, a quarter of them will be moderate price, and this is one of the tools the city's using to help make that happen. So they defer some of the property taxes for up to 12 years. So that's another tool. And then direct funding. The cities have contributed through Arch $40 million that have funded over almost 3,000 housing units around East King County. So the cities all pitched together and fund housing. So when you donated your piece of land for senior housing, two other cities put in a couple hundred thousand dollars to help get the affordability in that building. And they then leveraged that with other public funds. So funding of housing and doing that cooperatively with all the cities working together. There's been a group home for development disabled in Bothell that got built that way, where we all helped fund it with, and then that, they were able to get some funding from the county and the state. And that allowed a group to build a group or buy a house and make it be a group home for disabled people. So, and a wide range, so that's probably, that's like the fourth area. So that's a quick sort of overview of some different strategies cities have used. And so all of these, if they feel like they're appropriate, then policies need to be in your comp plan and that's what we'll be reviewing and giving. If we don't see them, we'll at least bring it to you to consider. You know, this policy would set up these different strategies. Okay. So if you, if you have, you know, I know you guys have a lot of stuff you're going through these days, but if anything catches your eye or attention that you want clarification on or a thought like that pops in your head, just send an email to Gary and he'll get it to us and we'll add that in when we come back to you. I think we're scheduled to come back at the end of the month.
June 25th, we'll bring the, the housing and human services element to you for the first time.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, one other quick question. The chart we were looking at that compared employment to housing options?
Yes.
Where we're hovering around one. Seems like in 1990, we were quite a bit higher than that, the economy, you know, we had more jobs than we had houses. Is that due to North Creek development and there hasn't been a significant gain in employment while housing development has increased over the last 20 years? Or do you guys have a take on that?
I think it's probably, yes. I'd say that. And then you've got all the Samamish County portion, I mean Snohomish County portion of the city, and there's housing growth going on there as well.
Okay. Great. So procedurally then, do, do we need to make a motion or anything to move on?
You know, I don't think you need to make a motion on this specifically. You'll make a motion later tonight to continue the, both the plan update as well as the transportation element. But we haven't yet brought you the actual housing element. We'll do that on the 25th. So I think at this time, you don't need to take any further action.
Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation. And then I guess at this point, we will move on to the second review of the transportation element.
Thank you.
This is, this is the second, the second part of transportation element that we are bringing to you actually, but this is a first review for this section. We call, we started with the background information and whatnot for the first time. We came to you May 21st. So we'll just go ahead and go past the requirements here since there's no one in the audience. Again, some background information about the schedule and our process, where we're going, which hasn't changed. You're currently still review, these are the current elements that have been reviewed and, and are in your packages. And still under review, including the transportation element, is the economic development and urban design elements that will come back at a later time. So at this time, we brought you the background, background information and part of the regional transportation setting. And what we're going to talk about today is in the local transportation setting, portion of the element, focusing on the public transit, pedestrian and bicycle facilities, and transportation demand management. And this is the schedule that we introduced to you at our previous meeting. And we are at this point right here with this date to be followed with the goals, policies, and actions in our next meeting on July 2nd. So for the public transit facilities, the, the element covers, covers our service, who is provided right now by Community Transit for Snohomish County, Metro, Metro King County, and Sound Transit. Some of the things that are covered in the element are included level of service, which may, which, which covers such things as frequency and headways, travel time for each of the routes, and accessibility from residents, including the quarter-mile standard for bus stops and one and a half mile radius for park and rides. And that's covered in, in Figure 7. Feature plans and programs that are covered under the public transit facilities include express and transit priority type projects, such as a swift or, or bat lane facilities that are being installed like on SR 522. Swift is a program, express program that is introduced by Community Transit and targeted for SR 527. Other feature plans and programs include transit centers or park and ride expansions as dictated in the downtown sub-area plan, for example, for a second park and ride downtown along the transit-oriented street of 185th and 98th, for example. And new service routes, which right now is kind of on hold with the funding, funding challenges that they're experiencing. But we do want to include long-range corridor planning that, that the agents, that the agencies are going to continue to look at. For example, the 228th corridor between Edmonds and SR 9, for example, that Community Transit still has in their long-range plans. And also possibly like service on 35th, the 35th Street corridor on the east side of the city. And also plans and programs such as the land use integration, which includes transit being integrated into the design of mixed-use developments and whatnot to, to encourage that and make it easier to use transit for, for our citizens. And then finally, some discussion about intergovernmental coordination of funding efforts to make sure that we're working with each agency as we develop projects and, and as they develop their programs and projects so that we can work jointly and try to partner on those, some of those things. The, another section of the, that we're bringing forward is the transportation demand management strategies and system management strategies. These include things to reduce the commute, or as part of the Commute Trip Reduction Act that requires certain employers with 100 or more employees to follow and reduce their single occupancy vehicle trips. For example, the Choice Connections Program, again, is a employer-based incentive program that Community Transit is leading on. And they, again, they are providing awards and different types of, just incentives to employers to help the employers themselves provide a program to their employees to get them out of their single occupancy vehicles. Curbed congestion is a newer program. That is a residential-based incentive program that Snohomish County is leading on with Community Transit. And that is a, they're targeting actual corridors such as SR 524, which is the north side of the city, where predominant residential housing is. And what that, an example of what that does is if somebody is looking for a specific opportunity to get to employment or whatnot, they, they can help them and actually target individual residents rather than an employer. And so the TDM strategies are basically to encourage the reduction of a single, single occupancy vehicle trips and to continue to reduce the carbon footprint and support those natural environment goals that, that Peter brought. We talked about before and those are, this is where that's going to occur from. Transportation system management strategies, including, is ideally to minimize stop delay and, and reduce congestion on our, our street network. And those things include, you know, adding left turn, you know, left or right turn exclusive lanes to, to, to encourage traffic flow basically and, you know, move traffic along. Coordinated signal timing or HOV lanes, those types of applications. And then just real briefly, the non-motorized facilities in the city that we need to review. Bicycle facilities, would continue to identify the current and potential routes and facilities that we already have in the program and, and then identify where, where the connectivity to the local and regional network and destinations are. And then prioritize the future projects and identify the funding opportunities for those. For the pedestrian facilities, we want to enhance connections to the educational activity centers, as well as just where, is where the safety, the safety impacts are and, and based on the demand that we've heard from residents that have called us and, and asked for, you know, sidewalks and whatnot, and, and other connections like that, just to get to a school, for example. One of our priorities is to make sure that everybody in a quarter mile of a school has that connection. We want to continue to pursue the funding opportunities with school district and adjacent jurisdictions in providing those types of safe route to school opportunities. We've collaborated with them on mid-block crosswalks and things like that to get them safely to and from those destinations. And we want to continue to require the developments to construct those types of frontage improvements. So those are the general areas that we're looking at right now and in the, in the section that you have. Our recommendation is to continue to accept any public testimony on this and for you to, for us to deliberate on any of the proposed changes, language in the element now, and if you have any other direction to provide us in terms of other areas that we want to look at or add in to the, those particular elements right now, the transit, pedestrian, bicycle areas. And then finally, to continue the hearing to July 2nd for the next phase of Part III of the transportation element, which will be the plans, goals, and, and, policies, goals and actions, actually, of the element. So if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer those for you right now.
Okay, great. Are there, well, I guess we'll, we can just do things in the order there. So we've got a, would, is there any public testimony?
No, we have, this is Don Samdahl, he's our, our consultant, working with us on the element itself. So he's going to support, answer any questions.
Any questions, other questions?
Just follow up on our last, so when do we expect to have the traffic model? And is that going to, are we still on time, on time for that date that you gave us before?
That date is the, the date is July 23rd to bring that information, the whole, to do that effort. It's a tight schedule and at this point, we're, we're still contemplating if we can still, you know, meet that time. But we're, at this time, we're still trying to hit that, Pat.
Just a question, and maybe you guys can answer me this now. With, and knowing what you know, and, what, what we do in the city, what, what effect is there? Is our traffic going to, is it going to fail at certain things no matter what we do in the city? Because it's so dependent upon those roads, the highways way leaving through it. So is, what, I'm trying to get at is, we could do, we could do nothing, no growth in our city and we still have failure of roads. city, and we still have failure of roads because of traffic coming through. Is, so how dependent is, how much effect the decisions we made, how big of effect does it have on our individual or those roadways in our city as far as traffic? And that's my question, I know you guys are going to come back to us on the 23rd, but that's what I'm trying to get at. How much effect on what we do will affect our roads?
How much effect for revising this plan, Pat, or I'm not quite sure what, in terms of what we do?
Well, we have to look at the, we have a, we've done an EIF on our downtown plan that says our roads will function with the amount of growth that we're expecting to have, or will up to a certain point.
Okay.
Does it matter if we didn't build one housing unit in downtown Bothell from here on out? Because of the traffic, because of development going on in other cities, would we still, how, are our roads going to fail at the same time? I mean, or does it matter because we have all this background traffic coming through? Does it matter what we do in the city as far as growth-wise?
I think it does matter because the background growth is, you're going to get background growth, and that background growth comes from outside of the city, within the city, development that you are, basically, here we're talking about housing, and we have to, we're going to have to address that congestion, you know, any congestion or what those impacts are. When we finish this model, it's going to show us where that may be more concentrated, but the projects, we have this, you know, the six-year, for example, the six-year transportation program, that's, those identified projects are targeted to, you know, lessen that impact and to mitigate those impacts. So what decisions that we want, I, you know, to come up with a best answer for you guys?
Here's my, here, I get, let me, let me, I'm not looking to say that we shouldn't have any growth, and it's the opposite of that. What I'm saying is, we're going to have growth, and the amount of density and the amount of housing we take is, if traffic is a concern, well, that's pretty much, you can take traffic out of it because we're going to have the traffic anyway. So we should be able to take, we should take upon, and look upon economic growth as a good thing, and we should mitigate through these traffic, which you guys are doing. But we're, but the opposite I'm trying to say is, if we said, hey, put our head in the sand, says we're not going to take growth because we're going to have traffic, the traffic's going to be there no matter what we do anyway, because from the background. So let's encourage the use of the density in the downtown and the jobs that we've created around here to create, to create a vibrant community. And because a lot of times we've heard in the past from one of the biggest concerns in the city and different things is, is we have these traffic, we have cut-through, you know, we're going to have traffic anyway, so we should, it should be a two-model. Yes, we should, we should encourage the six-year plan, the growth of these roads, the infrastructure, the added infrastructure, but at the same time, we can have economic growth because, you know, if you're just going to say, hey, we don't want to do anything because of traffic, it's coming anyway. Is that, is that true?
I don't know. I think, I think the traffic is going to come, but there is also additional capacity that we have too to accommodate that.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Don Samdahl. It's a good question. We're currently doing the transportation plan for Kirkland. They're asking the same question from the other perspective. One thing we could do, and we did for them, is with the travel model, we can basically run a scenario where there's no new growth in Bothell and see what kind of growth is going to happen on the major arterials, and I can guarantee it's going to be a pretty hefty amount, especially on 522 and 527, and that might help focus in on the places where the growth in Bothell itself is really, you know, creating the need. Would that be of assistance?
Well, I can imagine someone looking at it from the other way, and I'm trying to look at it from the positive, where, you know, what I'm trying to say is, traffics, we're going to have traffic on our highways anyway. If we can build housing and jobs in our city, it's only going to be to the benefit of us, that's, and have a robust six-year plan to address those as we go. That was my main thing. The traffic's coming, I was just trying to see if that's true, so.
Yeah, that's absolutely true. That's, there's, you know, the amount of traffic on the section of SR 527, for example, between 405 and Thrasher's Corner to the north is, you know, a lot of that just comes straight off the freeway, and how many of those are actual residents versus people going to Mill Creek or further north? You know, that's, that's just where, that's going to be one of our hard, our most busiest corridors, you know? But that's not because of just development from Bothell.
Right. Okay, well, I'll wait till then to see, I'm interested in that, thanks.
We'll definitely have those answers for you, Pat, in that.
Peter?
Thanks. Appreciate the presentation. So what pops to my mind as far as providing some, I don't know if I'm looking at feedback as much as some, or some direction as much as some feedback on some desired changes, and it goes to the theme that I started when we talked about this last time about integrating with some of the other plans. I heard, read through this and heard a lot tonight that made me think about discussions and decisions we've had in the economic development section of the plan, the urban design portion of the plan, the downtown plan separate from the comprehensive plan.
Those are the sub-area plan.
Right, the sub-area plan. The upcoming sub-area plan for Canyon Park area, which, you know, has a, has sort of a mixed-use or eco, or industrial mixed-use bent to it, which could really change things. I listened to the Assistant Vice Chancellor come by and talk about growth at the campus and the importance of the campus, and I felt like it is such a key part of the growth of the center of Bothell with, just as we heard on the housing side, what are we doing with student population?
Right.
So my mind goes to thinking about things that we need to consider relative to those other parts of the plan that really tie in well, and some specific things that I think are going to be really, really important is what is the strategy, tactic, plan, or goal for integrating with Community Transit, Sound Transit, and King County Metro to do something about bus congestion? You know, I know that there's plans to get buses off of Main Street, but looking at throughput of buses and working on better routing of the transit systems through the community, particularly as downtown densifies. And I know some of that's in the downtown plan, but I'm not certain that the downtown plan extends far enough to consider all of those ramifications, particularly with the anticipated 20- or 25-year growth at the campus. Staying on the campus theme, and this comes with the pedestrian connections and bicycle connections that you said in the plan, we've got a great downtown plan, there's just wonderful things that are happening, there's going to be a lot of growth. We are bringing destination-type facilities into our downtown center with Popkinie Field and McMiniman's coming, and the increase in dense population, the increase with the waterfront park that's going to draw people from all over the region. We've got this wonderful new thing out at Beardsley and 405. I think it's fabulous, but we have no valid connection of those different units, the Beardsley Landing, the campus, and the downtown center, because if you look at what's in between them, it can't, it can't handle what it is today. You know, the 104 went in, it was a great development, and I appreciated it, but, you know, paving a half a lane of one block of roadway as part of that development, you know, we really have to do something to focus on that corridor. It starts at Wayne's Curve, comes through downtown, and now we have to make that connection out to Beardsley and 405 from downtown. Pedestrian-wise, bike-wise, transit-wise, and just general transportation and traffic-wise. We heard during the urban design element about, you know, this concept that we wanted to leave in the deck over 522, and I really didn't see, and maybe I just missed it in reading the portion of the plan, but we were talking about park-and-rides, there's really no discussion of the improvement or the reconfiguration of the Kastner Way Park-and-Ride, which I think provides a huge opportunity for a number of great growth opportunities for the downtown center in Bothell. So those are just a few things that come onto my mind, providing opportunities to draw students more easily from the campus into downtown, connecting the new densities at 405 and Beardsley through the campus to downtown, doing something with the bus congestion so that we've got more opportunity for folks to densify in the downtown. Those, I think, are all really, really important parts of other plan elements that we need to make sure we're continuing to cross-check the other parts of the comp plan to make sure that, really, a huge cornerstone of it with this transportation piece is picking up and making sure that we've got continuity between them.
Thank you, Peter. That's a good comment. An example of that transit, that's what the goal of this transit-oriented street will do, if you, looking at the routes potentially, you know, with King County coming from the south and onto 98th over to 185th, the initial intersect with the Community Transit buses coming from the north to 527 and turning there, that, you know, that's going to be the potential transit center location, for example, next to City Hall here. That's a, you know, that's, those are the kind of plans that we're looking at, and that's what the downtown sub-area plan is geared for, and as well as the pedestrian connections. I think those pedestrian connections, we are targeting those opportunities as they come about, you know, to walk from, you could easily walk from the campus to downtown, it's a 20 minutes.
You can easily walk from campus to downtown, however, it's just brutal right now. I mean, you know, the worst thing about coming to Planning Commission is just having to drive home along that same old stretch of roadway, but I just think that there's huge opportunity there and not to lose that, particularly with the motivations and goals and aspirations of other elements of the comp plan, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Peter.
All right, thanks, Sherman. I had a few quick questions.
Okay.
In the packet, it looked like we moved from 5% to 6% in public transit ridership out of citizens of Bothell. How's that compared to other jurisdictions around us? Are we on par, above, below? Do you have any idea?
Do you know the answer, Don?
Don's working on a lot of the other adjacent jurisdictions.
It's pretty much on par, you know, with the exception of, you know, some of the centers like downtown Bellevue and so forth, but on the east side, that's a pretty common number, and probably, you know, it's a couple percent higher than some of the other places. Redmond's a little bit higher, but it's pretty well there.
Okay. As I was reading through the public transit section, it seemed like, I mean, it made a couple of key points about routes being cut, services being reduced. We're increasing population, I mean, I know these are services outside of our control, but what influence or what kind of working relationship do we have with Community Transit and Metro? Are these just services that are cut across the board regardless of jurisdiction and ridership? Or do they look at these specific routes for the Bothell, you know, population and make cuts specifically to our area that way?
Well, our relationship with these, with these providers, be it Community Transit or Metro, we're working with them constantly. So especially, Community Transit, for example, we work with them on our CTR program that we have to monitor. We contract with them to review that, monitor that, and as well as assist our employers in marketing that, those types of incentive programs. And then, you know, for King County Metro, of course, we're working with them tightly just because of the downtown influence, you know, that is there, in their realm, in their area, and 522 are all the developments that we've had to do down here with the bat lanes. That's, again, very good relationships with these people, and we are definitely in, will continue to do that and collaborate with them in terms of, you know, any future projects where, you know, there may be some potential for partnering with them on any development of roadways that, you know, would benefit them or if it's a benefit their routes. To answer the second part of your question, it's like, I think if the cuts and the reduction in routes, I think those are kind of just the temporary, what we're seeing as temporary, you know, impacts because of funding, some funding concerns, but, you know, we have to look at in this document in the longer term, and we still want to encourage, you know, additional routes through here. There are routes that were taken away, you know, we went through that three years ago, and that was, again, a part of the recession stuff that everybody was going through, but when we talk to these guys now, they are bringing back routes as they can, and that funding is coming back to them solely but surely, and they are also continuing to make plans that do serve, you know, the areas of the city that are lacking. So we'll see those come back.
Excuse me, can I just make one comment? I think, my experience is, it's really important in these plans to articulate kind of your vision of what's needed for transit to serve your future needs, because that provides you with information that you can share with Metro or Community Transit and make your case for why, you know, looking out as the community grows, that you're going to need these services. So even though you might not be providing them directly, we found it's a very important tool, and so we're going to be, in addition to what you already see in the document there, we're going to be doing more outreach to add some more detail in the plan to address those concerns.
Okay. Yeah, I think that'd be great. I mean, we already have had a few sessions where we talked about reduction of parking requirements for apartments downtown and a couple allowances that were made, and as we're, you know, inviting a lot of new residents to Bothell downtown, seems like we should have the bus service to support it, just tried to bring that up. One other corridor that I think could be improved as far as a connection point, it's on here as a future opportunity on Bothell Everett Highway between 240th and downtown. I don't know exactly what the timeframe is with that. Is that going to be part of the multiway boulevard, or is that stopping short of extending all the way to 240th?
You're talking about the widening, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just taking a look at the map, and it says...
Which one? Which figure?
Figure TR9. Proposed dripped end or signed route bicycle lane or shared roadway between 240th down to downtown.
Okay. So it is a proposed, it's a proposed facility, you want to? And generally, any of the improvements that we're working on right now, we're working on the northerly section of that, right, between 240th and 228. Those improvements are going in with bike facilities and pedestrian facilities, for example, and increasing the capacity with additional lanes. The section that you're referring to is, here, you want to just use this here? That portion is also in our plan, but it's, you know, those kinds of, we're just don't have, we don't have the funding for that identified right now, but we also, we'll be definitely pursuing that with those opportunities come about. There's other, there's other projects right now that have put in partial, part of those improvements as a, you know, development frontage, and it's just a matter of identifying funding to finish that, to finish that type of, that, to finish that five-lane section, I guess, if you will.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it won't be just, the long-range plan is to make it a five-lane continuous.
All right. Thanks, that's all I had. Thanks, Sherman.
Okay.
Just to answer the question about the multiway boulevard, that won't extend any further than the four or five blocks in the downtown core, so the rest of it will be a more conventional four or five-lane, five-lane highway.
Any other comments from the commission? I had just a few comments about the wording, I don't know if that's in too much detail this time. I don't know if that's in too much detail this time. No, that's fine. If that's something we should go for later. Um, uh, just really quickly on, in, in the introduction on TR-27, uh, when we're listing kind of the vision statement, provides accessibility for the communities to recreation medical and retail locations. I'm wondering about including educational in there? I'm just thinking back to when we, uh, had testimony from, I think it was a staff from University of Washington about just how, how important, uh, that campus is to Bothell and this seemed like a very, you know, natural place to, to remember that and, you know, we, we want, about serving the students.
Yeah, definitely. We, we, we can include that, that in there, that language.
And then one other thing that's more of a convention, I noticed throughout the document that we include the route numbers a lot. And the reason that caught my eye is I figured that would be something that could change pretty fluidly. I mean, uh, whereas the code here is, is, uh, more, more stable. And so my concern is just that on, on the bus side, you know, they, they're changing the routes and, and optimizing and doing their thing. And I don't want the, the coding here to, to get out of date. So is, is the convention to include the route numbers or is that something that can be just alluded to and, and not that specific here?
Uh, that's a good question. I'm not sure. I think that that can be either included or not. I, I, the route numbers really, they may, they may change, uh, where the actual route goes, but the numbers pretty much stay the same. So I don't think it would hurt to, to change that or to include it because ultimately everybody refers to, well, you know, if they're looking at our plan and they want to identify what services is provided there, they can, you know, it's in our plan and that's what, what it is. If there's a variation in the route, for example, then that might change, you know, pretty quickly and they can make those kind of decisions. But generally for the past, you know, since the original, these numbers have not, the route numbers have not changed. So I don't think it's detrimental to put it in there.
Yeah, I just wanted to check about that.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Um, well, I think then at, at this point, uh, we, we've provided, uh, fe- feedback and direction and I think we'll, I'll entertain a motion to, um, continue this to, uh, can, can you pull that schedule back up? Was it July 2nd?
Oh, yeah. They wanna switch that.
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
And so I'll entertain a motion for continuing this transportation element and periodic plan and code update to July 2nd.
Move to continue the public hearing on the transportation element and periodic plan and code update to July 2nd, 2014.
Second.
Any discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. To show that it was passed unanimously. So moving on to our agenda, uh, study session? I guess we, uh, have none. Uh, any old business? Uh, none? Uh, reports from staff?
I do have a, a report from staff, but first also, um, we should continue the overall plan and, and, uh, periodic plan and code update, uh, hearing to June 18th, um, which is when we will, uh, take up, uh, capital facilities, uh, economic development and urban design, both for follow-up reviews, or all for follow-up reviews.
Yeah. I move that we continue the public hearing on the 2015 periodic pla- periodic plan and code update to June 18th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's show the motion passed unanimously.
And I'd just like to, uh, point out that, um, uh, first of all, uh, we have a, uh, council study session on the downtown transition density limits, uh, that, uh, the recommendation from planning commission goes to council for the first time on June 17th. It was originally scheduled for June 10th, but, uh, last night they, they pushed that to the 17th. And it would be good to have a, a planning commission, uh, commissioner, uh, there, uh, for that, uh, presentation. Um, if there is anyone here tonight that's, uh, able to do that, I can, uh, send out an email to the full commission.
Uh, would you mind sending out an email? And that also gives people a chance to check their schedules and see if they're availability.
Okay, I'll do that. And then, uh, there are two other code amendments that are, uh, coming up for council hearings. Uh, last night, we had a public hearing on the food truck issue. That was part of, uh, the 2011 miscellaneous code amendments. It, uh, when those were taken to council in 2012, uh, they peeled off food truck issue, uh, directed us to bring it back with, along with the peddler's code, uh, per, per the planning commission recommendation essentially. Um, the city attorney, uh, ultimately, um, recommended that the peddler's code be repealed in, in its entirety. So we chose to, uh, give council the opportunity to, uh, to consider the code amendments for food trucks that, uh, planning commission had, um, uh, studied, uh, before choosing not to, uh, move forward. And, and so that was, that happened last night. Uh, council was favorable to moving forward with, uh, those code amendments with some, some modifications. And that goes back to council on, uh, July 15th, uh, for a public hearing. Um, also on July 15th, we're scheduling the, uh, public hearing on the miscellaneous downtown code amendments, uh, that, um, uh, council heard in the study session, uh, last month. Uh, so those are the amendments that included the, uh, parking reduction for green buildings. Uh, and, um, uh, well, the, the notable one, probably the most of the, most of the discussion was on the sidewalk cafe issue, so, um, and since those have both, both been to council for study session, uh, it won't be the first time they're receiving the planning commission recommendation. It's not necessary for planning commissioner to be there, but I'll put those in the email too as, as opportunities for, for a commissioner to represent. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Uh, any reports from members? Okay. And, uh, taking motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Second.
Thank you.